Thank you very much. So the warrant was posted at 12:30 PM on October 15, 2025, and was also posted on the website and the Town Hall Bulletin Board. Speakers, if you come up, please move yourselves up to the microphones so we should hear you speak on the article. You will please state your name and address, and the moderator will recognize you. And now I would like to call the Chairman of the Board, Ms. Crumzik, up to do our in memoriam.
Unfortunately, I don't have a loud Italian voice, so. This year, the town of Milbury is dedicating the annual town report to Chester P. Henratty Jr. Justice's commitment to an involvement in the community will always be remembered. Justice served on the following committees throughout the years: Blackstone Valley Regional School Committee, Safety Committee, School Committee, School Bill Needs Committee, Fiscal Responsibility Committee, Swim Study, and Charter Study Committee. There was an error on the date of his birth, which was April 30, 1951. But we thought we'd honor his father and put his birthday down, too. Our appreciation and sympathy is extended to the families of those who served our community. George R. Gilbert died January 1, 2024, Certified Waya. John Solomon died January 7, 2024, Civil Defense Auxiliary Police. Luigi Tella died June 29, 2024, Civil Defense Auxiliary Police and Computer Study Committee. Stephen A. Brison died July 21, 2024, Police Evaluation Study Committee. Grace May died August 22, 2024, Deputy Inspector Tella Elections. Kenneth Thompson died October 14, 2024, Dog Control Study Committee Finance Committee. Patricia Jem died November 25, 2024, Poll Worker Elections. John J. Mulhane died December 1, 2024, Treasurer Special Officer. Daniel J. Donovan died January 20, 2025, Ponds and Lakes Commission. Kyle Scott, March 3, 2025, Conservation Committee. Robin Genetti died February 9, 2025, Milbury Firefighter, Opiate Crisis Task Force. Carol A. Army died May 3, 2025, Poll Worker. And Catherine A. Arndt died July 25, 2025, Poll Worker. Thank you.
All right, let's get to work. That brings us to Article 1. We'll now hear from the Chair of our Finance Committee.
Charles Cooper, 29 Oak Pond Avenue. The Finance Committee recommends, and I move, that we pass over Article 2 as written.
Is there a second? Would anyone like to be heard on this? Well, then we'll vote. All in favor? All opposed? That passes. That brings us to Article 2. We'll hear again from the Chair of the Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends, and I move, that we pass over Article 2 as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Would anyone like to be heard on this? Well, then we'll vote. Anyone? Yes, please. Did you want to speak or vote? Come on up. Come on up to the microphone. Tell us your name and where you live, please. I can't hear you. Kevin will be right there in a second.
Is that better?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you.
Gail King, 92 South Oxford Road, New York, Mass. I oppose this article basically because the.
If I could interrupt just for a second. The motion is to skip over it.
Oh, okay.
So.
All right, then.
Then, Ms. King, hopefully you'll be back when it does come back.
Sure, okay.
Excellent. Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard? Well, then we'll vote. All in favor? All opposed? That passes. That brings us to Article 2. We'll hear again from the Chair of the Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends, and I move, that we pass over Article 2 as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Would anyone like to be heard on this? Sir?
I would like to know why the motion was changed to raise inappropriate to take from free cash.
Thank you. Would someone have an answer for that? Why it's from now free cash as opposed to appropriate? We'll now hear from our Town Manager.
In the article, we listed a number of ways that we can fund it, but in this particular case, we're suggesting that we use free cash because we have that money available in the account.
And does that answer your question, sir? Thank you. Anyone else like to be heard on this? Please.
28 Sullivan Place. I was just wondering if there was a breakdown or what these expenses are for?
Thank you. Would someone have a breakdown in terms of the $79,000? Thank you.
Hi, Chris Wilber, 228 North Main Street. Essentially, this is for tuition for students and transportation. I don't have the breakdown between the split between the two things. We understand before the budget is passed how many kids are admitted into Norfolk, Aggie, and that's in our budget. The problem that happened this year is they had three kids drop out, and miraculously, they selected the next three kids from Milbury, and that's why we had to put this into this article. Does that answer?
Thank you, Mr. Wilber. Please.
Maybe he can answer this. Is this a public school or a private school? And if it's a private school, why are we paying for the tuition?
Chris Wilber, 228 North Main Street. Hi again. This is not a private school. It's a school just like Blackstone Valley. We don't have the option to not refuse students to go there, just like we don't have the option to refuse kids to go to Blackstone Valley. Essentially, if there's a course that a student wants to take that Milbury High School does not give, then they can go to these schools.
Mr. Wilber, again, thank you. Anyone else like to be heard on this article? Well, then we'll vote. All in favor? All opposed? That passes. We'll hear again from the Chair of our Finance Committee for Article 3.
The Finance Committee recommends, and I move, that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $79,955 to pay tuition at Norfolk Agricultural School.
Is there a second? You've got a second? Would anyone like to be heard on this? Sir?
I would like to know why the motion was changed to raise inappropriate to take from free cash.
Thank you. Would someone have an answer for that? Why it's from now free cash as opposed to appropriate? We'll now hear from our Town Manager.
In the article, we listed a number of ways that we can fund it, but in this particular case, we're suggesting that we use free cash because we have that money available in the account.
And does that answer your question, sir? Thank you. Anyone else like to be heard on this? Please.
28 Sullivan Place. I was just wondering if there was a breakdown or what these expenses are for?
Thank you. Would someone have a breakdown in terms of the $79,000? Thank you.
Hi, Chris Wilber, 228 North Main Street. Essentially, this is for tuition for students and transportation. I don't have the breakdown between the split between the two things. We understand before the budget is passed how many kids are admitted into Norfolk, Aggie, and that's in our budget. The problem that happened this year is they had three kids drop out, and miraculously, they selected the next three kids from Milbury, and that's why we had to put this into this article. Does that answer?
Thank you, Mr. Wilber. Please.
Maybe he can answer this. Is this a public school or a private school? And if it's a private school, why are we paying for the tuition?
Chris Wilber, 228 North Main Street. Hi again. This is not a private school. It's a school just like Blackstone Valley. We don't have the option to not refuse students to go there, just like we don't have the option to refuse kids to go to Blackstone Valley. Essentially, if there's a course that a student wants to take that Milbury High School does not give, then they can go to these schools.
Mr. Wilber, again, thank you. Anyone else like to be heard on this article? Well, then we'll vote. All in favor? All opposed? That passes. Which brings us to Article 4, and we'll hear again from the Chair of our Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends, and I move, that the town pass over Article 4.
Is there a second? Would someone have an answer as to why we're passing? Oh! There's a simple answer about a grant. Would anyone like to?
I'm happy to answer that question.
Please.
Hi. So the reason why we're going to pass over this is because Senator Moore was able to secure a state earmark for $57,000 for this purpose, so we no longer need to have those funds be raised here at town meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Town Manager. And that answer your question? Well.
Yes.
Anyone else like to be heard? Well, then we'll vote. All in favor? All opposed? That passes. Brings us to Article 5, and we'll hear again from the Chair of our Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends, and I move, that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $25,000 for the testing and evaluation of the performance of the current public safety radio system to identify operational deficiencies in the equipment required to ensure that said radio system meets the needs of first responders and the public, including all incidental and related costs.
Is there a second? We have a second. Anyone like to be heard on this article? Well, then we'll vote. All in favor? All opposed? That passes. Which brings us to Article 6.
The Finance.
Please.
The Finance Committee recommends, and I move, that the town vote transfer from free cash the sum of $15,000 for installation of an inspector's test valve on the dry sprinkler system located in the original part of the Milbury Public Library, including all incidental and related costs.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Anyone like to be heard on this article? Well, then we'll vote. All in favor? All opposed? That passes. Brings us to Article 7. We'll hear again from the Chair of our Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends, and I move, that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $160,000 to pay a legal settlement for an eminent domain appeal associated with the McCracken Road reconstruction project.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Anyone like to be heard on this? Well, then we'll vote. All in favor? All opposed? That passes. Which brings us to Article 8.
The Finance Committee recommends, and I move, that the town vote to transfer the care and custody of the old fire headquarters at 126 Elm Street, property from the Board of Engineers to the Board of Selectmen, and to authorize the selectmen to enter into agreements for the disposition of said property by conveyance or lease under such terms and conditions and minimum amounts as the selectmen shall deem to be in the town's best interest.
Is there a second?
Second.
We've got a second. Anyone like to be heard on this? Then we'll vote. All in favor? We need two thirds. All in favor? All opposed? And that has two thirds. Which brings us to Article 9. Nine of 12. We're almost home. We'll hear again. Really, we ought to be here by 7:20. We'll hear from the Chair of our Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends, and I move, that the town vote to resend in access borrowing authorized for the Shaw School project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anyone like to be heard on this? Then we'll vote. All in favor? All opposed? That passes. Which brings us to Article 10.
The Finance Committee recommends, and I move, that the town vote to borrow the sum of $19,979,111 as set forth under Article 10 of the warrant for this meeting.
Is there a second? We've got a second. We'll now hear from Mr. Wilber.
Would you guys like to go down? The screen's coming down. Yeah. Good evening, everybody. Chris Wilber, 228 North Main Street, School Committee Chair. If you all want to just vote for the $19 million and not know exactly what it's paying for, we can just skip the presentation, but I'm pretty sure it's a large enough amount that you should know what we're asking for. So that's why I'm up here. Just wanted to give a little bit of background on how we got here, how we got to the $19 million. I'm also going to have Joe Notton, who is from Turva Corp., come up and do the technical stuff because I am not a roof expert. I am a money guy, but not a roof guy. So in 2019, the school did a facilities assessment. Coming out of that, there were three real big areas that we knew were going to come do at some point. The roofs at both Elmwood and the high school, the HVAC systems at both Elmwood and the high school, and then the, actually, the doors that you go in and out of all the schools. That third one's clearly a much smaller number, and we are getting grants to fix those periodically throughout. So those are not part of this discussion, but I just want to give full transparency. In 2023, we actually had a scan of the roofs done. Do you have the clicker? If you go to the next one. This is a scan of the high school back in 2023. The red areas meant that there was moisture underneath the roof, the existing roof that was there. Hence, some of the TikTok videos that some people may have seen of the water rushing through the roofs, this is the reason why. If you go to the next one, we can show Elmwood as well. Elmwood, not as bad as high school, but still pretty bad. For anybody who's new to town, the bottom section of this building was built in 2001. The back, basically the back left where the red spots are showing up, that's the old gym cafeteria area. That's from the original building in 1969? 68, thank you, Mr. Bitter. From 1968. Hence why it's failing now. There is water intrusion in both schools. Elmwood on the stage, if you went into the cafeteria now, there are buckets catching the rainwater that's coming in. So just want, again, full transparency of why we're here now. There was a creation of the Roof Subcommittee who has taken this on to basically get this ball rolling. We sent out an RFP for project managers. We had seven responses. We interviewed five, and we settled on Turva Corporation. You'll hear from Joe from Turva. Once Turva was in place, we had an RFP for architecture firm. We had 11 responses. We met with six possible firms, and we selected Habibin Associates. They're here as well. So again, we want all the questions to be answered tonight because you really should know what we're paying for. So these are the experts in the room. In early August, we had a joint meeting between the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, Roof Committee, and School Committee, and reviewed all of the options for the both schools. It is as ugly as you can imagine, so that's why we're here tonight, trying to get both schools passed because the thought of going through even two more winters and spring seasons where it rains like a bugger, it's not going to be pretty. What I can tell you is, other than the roofs, both buildings are structurally sound. They've done testing on the roof everywhere, the walls, everything is where it should be. So once these roofs are on, I can tell you we will not be back in a year or two years or three years saying we need a new high school, we need a new Elmwood. That's not even an option. So it's really the roofs that are failing, and if we don't do something soon, then we could be looking at something much bigger. So with that, I would like to call Joe up just to give you the ins and outs of each of those projects because, again, I think it's very important to be completely transparent with everyone and know what we're purchasing. So, Joe.
Good evening, residents. I appreciate you guys coming out and your time tonight. I'm going to quickly give you a background on the overall project, then we'll dive into some of the details around the scope. So as Chairman Wilber mentioned, we have members of my team here, Mia Ayers and Vamtri Takalapali, and as well as members of the design team, the architecture team, Joe Mello, and from IMEG, which is the engineering firm who is looking at the mechanical systems, John Breton. And so any questions? We have all the details, and we can provide any answers on that. And as Chairman Wilber mentioned, we know that this is a big ask of 19.9-plus million dollars, but it's important for you guys to understand the implications, the need for that money and the implications of not funding it. So both the high school and the Elmwood Street buildings have been experiencing water intrusion for a number of years. And additionally, both the high school and Elmwood buildings have had insurance claims due to the roof conditions. At the high school, the issue of the water intrusion is so prevalent that it's common for classroom spaces to be relocated. On top of this, the roof condition is so deteriorated that the facility staff and outside firms are brought in on a regular basis to address the issues. That has required a lot of patching, sealing, and immediate need repairs. And both school buildings have been dealing with problematic rooftop infrastructure and mechanical equipment. There are areas within the schools where the heating and ventilation are not operating and consistent maintenance requirements of the HVAC system are taking up large portions of the school operating budgets. The school department importantly has been tackling these roof and mechanical challenges for many years, as you heard Chairman Wilber describe. Based upon updated evaluations and escalating maintenance challenges, a comprehensive review and design process started in January. We felt it was important to detail that the schools have been dealing with the damaged roof conditions and that school leadership has been doing all possible to preserve the integrity of the building systems. But even with those efforts, on the screen, as Chairman Wilber mentioned, is the survey results from the spring of 2023. What is shown here is not just where water occurred once, it's where the damages underneath that roof membrane and the conditions underneath it have been damaged in rooftop assembly. There are two critical elements to keep in mind around this. We're certain that the damage has increased since the 2023 survey, and if that the replacement is not done now, the interior finishes and health conditions of the schools will be put in jeopardy. This is the moisture damage at the Elmwood School. And while the areas have, there's less damage than at the high school, you can see that the roofs are surviving on borrowed time, and you can expect that the damage has not only increased but will become more severe if the roof is not addressed. The roof system is five years beyond its warranty and useful life, period. The town committees and school leadership have identified the criticality of the building conditions and built out a project team, the Charter Path Forward. With that background, we want to provide more TDL on the conditions of each school so that you guys can understand the context of it. At the high school, this building was originally built in 1952 but has had several major renovations and expansions. The most notable element for our discussion this evening is that the roofing system and mechanical equipment were installed in 2001. On this slide, we capture the problem areas of the roof. You can see that it's significantly damaged. Temporary repairs cannot protect the conditions. What you see in these pictures are open seals and a fully deteriorated roof membrane. What looks like a mesh screen is actually the underlayment where the roof membrane has gone away altogether. This would be the equivalent of a residential property where the shingles are missing and you have exposed deck and water. Every time that there's moisture there would go right into your deck and destroy the items underneath it. On this slide, we are showing images of the impact to the school operations and the potential risk of additional damage. The inconvenience of having water coming down into your main lobby or into your classrooms is one thing, but the other photo you can see in that is water being guarded from damaging the main electrical panels and infrastructure of the school, which are items that are very difficult to pay for and then recover from. In addition to the deteriorated roof membrane, there are other problems, problem issues with the roof. The school has failed caulking joints allowing water to go in through the masonry walls. In the roof area, there's not a correct slope, and there's not enough drainage, drain areas. And the result of this is the water collects on the roof, causing further deterioration. And the result of this is the water collects on the roof, causing further deterioration and water infiltration. The next two slides highlight challenges found in our evaluations of the HVAC infrastructure and mechanical equipment. The image on the left shows a main run of the school's gas line. This gas line is in poor condition with significant rusts and the blocking that supports it on top of the, separating it from the roof and, and the gas line is in bad condition. Any failure on this is a safety concern and would be a major disruption to the HVAC system. An important issue to keep in mind is under any circumstance, this line would need to be raised up further off the roof. The image on the right shows failed duct lining, which occurs on many areas of the duct run around this extensive roof. There are numerous areas where the duct worked inside the duct lining is also damaged, which not only allows moisture to get into the school, but also leads to higher utility costs, reduced performance of the HVAC system, and greater strain on the mechanical equipment. Only a few more minutes, please. Sorry. On this slide, we have included photos to illustrate the extent of the equipment that is on the roof and the toll that the time, the time has taken on the equipment. You can see all the rust. The school facility department and school HVAC service contractor have done their best to keep the system working, but there are numerous pieces of critical equipment that have already failed. We have equipment pieces that are difficult to access and that equipment is out of date to the extent that required replacement parts and operating refrigerants are getting harder and harder to source and more expensive. We're going to move on now to the Elm, Elmwood Elementary. Built in 1968, the school was expanded in 2001, and it was during this project that a new roofing system and a new mechanical equipment were installed. The issues at Elmwood are similar to the findings found at the high school. There are areas that require constant patching and added sealants. There are sections of the roof where water doesn't drain and accumulates. And the roof is almost five years past its warranty period and numerous roof areas are failing. The following three photos show problem areas at Elmwood. You can see the improper drainage and the collecting water. You can also exceed the extent, the white sealants that are put on there, the extent of the, the temporary sealants that have been put in place to try to prevent water from coming in. Elmwood is a much smaller school, obviously, than the high school and has a more concise layout of the rooftop mechanical equipment. But the conditions of the equipment are similar to the high school. The large scaled cooling tower shown on the right is damaged and requires regular repairs and is dumping water directly onto the roof. Multiple rooftop units are not functional and exterior elements are rusting with interior components are difficult to source and the maintenance requirements are becoming more frequent and more expensive. The conditions that have been identified in the roofs and mechanical equipment are not a problem isolated and just a responsibility of the school's facilities department. The failing mechanical units make it difficult to provide consistent heating, cooling, and ventilation. The water getting into both schools impacts the learning environment. Most importantly, the interior building components and materials are getting damaged and are at risk. There are also safety risks from the building infrastructure getting damaged and from poor indoor air quality that results. The extent of the constant maintenance on the equipment and roof strains the annual operating budget and diverts school maintenance, janitorial staff from other responsibilities. The following are the details that we are recommending to solve these issues. At the high school, this warrant article calls for the replacement of the roof, replacing of the rooftop HVAC equipment, and the installation of a solar system reduced, reduced utility costs across the life of that roof and mechanical equipment. The scope would be the same at the Elmwood Street Elementary School. Replace the roof, replace the HVAC equipment, install a solar system of a similar size to the one installed at the high school. The roofing materials and installation process come with a 30-year warranty and mechanical upgrades will improve the operating efficiency while reducing internal and external operating costs. This is a, a, a breakdown of the 19.9 million dollars. At the high school, it's 13.6 million dollars. 8.23 million is for the roof and related upgrades. 4.83 million is for the HVAC equipment and 351,000 is for the solar installation. At the Elmwood Street School, it's 6.36 million dollars. 4.17 is for the roof. 1.84 is for the HVAC equipment and 351,000 for the solar installation. This is a slide that we put together to try to quantify and explain the extent of the equipment and some of the pricing that builds up into the cost. The HVAC equipment at the high school in Elmwood Street is extensive and is composed of, comprised of both minor and major pieces of equipment. The high school has 91 pieces of equipment for replacement as well as supporting infrastructure. The most expensive components on a per-unit basis are the air handling units and rooftop units. We put together a similar slide for the Elmwood Street School. The Elmwood Street School has 43 pieces of equipment for replacement. On this slide, we just wanted to talk a little bit about the timeline. If approved tonight by this town residents and approved by the town ballot on the, uh, November 18th, the project would complete the design process through December and into early January. We would target public bidding to start in mid-January and complete in February. And the construction activity at the high school and Elmwood Street School would run from really the end of the academic year, 2000, June 2026 through early fall 2026. The goal would be getting into the bidding pro, as early as possible in 2026 to allow time for the procurement of the mechanical equipment, which has some lead time, and to get into construction and as soon as school is out in summer 2026. This target schedule is driven by the desire to avoid additional inflationary costs and to prevent additional school damage.
Thank you, Joe. So I really just wanted to come and talk as a towns person because there's obviously, this is a large, large ask for two of our biggest assets in town. We need to make sure that they stay sound, stay dry. I just want to give some numbers on some things, some recent buildings that have gone up around us. So if we don't take care of these buildings, uh, Dougherty High School was built for 293 million. South High was built for 209 million. Neshoba was 241 million. And David Proudey, which is, was just a renovation, not even a full new building, was 111 million. While 20 million, 19-plus million seems like a lot, these other numbers would be catastrophic to all of us. We've got to take care of these buildings. There are some questions about the solar. We decided to, to add that to these projects. In 10 years, it essentially pays for itself, so the final 20 years of the roof would be gravy on top of, of what we're putting in. It's an investment. It's something that I think this town deserves because we, we want to be able to enjoy these buildings, keep educating our kids. And as I said, the buildings themselves are structurally sound. They've done, we've done multiple mold tests to make sure that the water that is getting in isn't causing any issues. It is not yet. So there's also questions about the MSBA. We've all seen even the vote just before this. We were able to rescind back a large portion from the Shaw because we were able to get MSBA funding. Just to give some context of what MSBA's funding is, uh, it's from the state, it's, but it has to be on projects that are 30 years old or older. So for these roofs that went on in 2001, we're not looking at the possibility of being selected for that type of a refund until 2031. These roofs are not going to last five more years. I wish they would. And we don't even know if we would be selected in 2031. So that's the, that's the tricky part about the MSBA. We were very lucky with the Shaw School to be able to get that, uh, into that program. I thank you, and we're here to answer any questions. Not me, the smart guy's about roof. I'm here to help with numbers, but I want any questions that need to be asked because these are your roofs, just as they're the students' roofs, so please ask away. Thank you, sir.
Gentlemen, thank you. Who would like to be heard on this? Mr. Lozaro, could you tell us who you are?
Nick Lozaro, 21 Water Street. I just had a quick question for the engineers. So we're talking about this funding, which is critical, but I guess one question I have that I, I was curious about is what are we doing to prevent coming back here in 20, 30 years with the same issue? Is there a redesign to the roof that's going to allow for that kind of a problem to be prevented so we don't have to dig into our pockets again?
So we have the town, uh, the school department, Superintendent Myers, Assistant Superintendent Bedard have selected one of the top roofing specialists in the state. They specialize in doing roof projects for, in the public environment here in Massachusetts, which has its own intricacies. And they've put forward, we're, we're in a design development phase, but a, a, a design that is comprehensive, that is expert, and the roofing system has a 30-year life. We also have the engineering firm IMEG, which is a nationally recognized expert in, in engineering, and they have put for the replacement equipment that is high efficiency and will save the town money over the lifetime of these units. And so it's, we haven't finished the design, but it's, uh, we're already sort of finishing up the design development phase and going to construction documents. So it's very well baked and both Habib and Associates and IMEG have done an excellent job and it would really serve the town well to correct some of the issues that were done in the 2001 installations.
Also, Chris Wilbur, 228 North Main Street. So the roof that was put on at the high school was done by a corporation that went out of business about 10 years after they installed it here. That's the reason why we were not able to get the warranty that we would with these companies. Both companies that Mr. Knutson highlighted have been around for a long time and we're planning on them being around for at least 30 more years to make sure that these roofs stick around.
Thank you, Mr. Wilbur and Mr. Knutson. Sir.
Francis King, 92 South Oxer Road. Chairman Wilber, you were talking about the mold. Now, what are you doing to make sure? Because this, the mold, as we all know, could become a, a big issue and more expensive than just replacing the roof.
Thousand percent. Uh, thank you for the question. Again, we've, we've done studies of two or three over the last two years. Uh, there is no mold and we will continue to check that until the new roofs go on because if you don't catch mold early, it, it, as you said, could cost even more to, to get it out. But there is none at the present moment. And that's one of the reasons we need to get these roofs done quicker than putting them off because we don't want things in walls that we can't take care of.
Thank you. Sir.
Jeremy Weldon, 3 Lieutenant Haynes Drive. Um, I'm glad you brought up the 2001 company, uh, them going out of business. What do we have to kind of protect ourselves in this case? I assume when we selected Cape Way Roofing in 2001 that we thought they would be around to honor any warranties. And in their request for services that recently went out, uh, one of the bullet points states there was, quote, "ample evidence of incorrect installation." So I guess like, I get that stuff has to be replaced, but how are we protecting ourselves to make sure that in 10, 15 years, we're not back in this exact same spot? Is there a bond we can put that like, you guarantee that it's installed correctly? Warranties are great, but with most of them, if you're not doing preventative maintenance or if it's installed incorrectly, nobody, no manufacturer's going to back a warranty if it's not installed incorrectly, if it's not installed correctly, so.
Mr. Weldon, thank you.
Sir. The 30-year warranty will actually come from the manufacturer. And, and so the, after the, um, Joe Mello can probably speak in, in, in more detail to this, but the, the installer is, i- i- is, is not the, uh, the entity that is going to provide you the long-term warranty. The installer owns their workmanship for a, a year or two years, but the 30 years comes from the manufacturer, which is, uh, the basis of the design is, uh, a, a national firm that's been around a, a long time with a tested product. Um, and so that warranty is not, will not be at risk.
Yes, thank God. Joe Mello from Habib and Associates. One of the things you mentioned is the installation problems. My team of experts are here to oversee during construction. We'll inspect and hold the contractor to the design details we've worked so hard to create to make sure that the installation is done properly per specifications and drawings.
Thank you, sir.
Bruce DeValle, 14 Forest Drive. One question. Does this number, this bid, look at the unforeseen once they uncover the roof, structural and all?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, good evening again. Joe Mello from Habib Associate Architects. We, as we put the drawings together, we have what's called unit pricing and we guesstimate an amount and lock in a price per square foot for if we find damaged roof deck, damaged blocking. As we know, there's been water infiltration, so as time has gone by, things have deteriorated. So we plan for that, so we own the cost upfront and it's not a hidden extra and they upcharge us. So we, we plan for that.
Mr. Mello, thank you. Yes, please.
April Linger, 6 Ackman Road. I have a question of like, so this is my first meeting, so I don't know the answer to this. So we're borrowing money to get this done, which is much needed. Does that mean our taxes go up as Millbury residents? And if so, how much percentage-wise? So people can like budget in a sense, if you know what I mean?
Welcome to your first meeting. Glad you're here.
Thank you for the question.
Um, yes, i- it, this would, uh, increase our taxes. On average, it's going to be about two hundred and fifty per household.
Per year?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Sir.
Hi, Ray Kelly, two Eldon Drive. Uh, it doesn't say how many years, but I've done the math, and I think it's sixteen. Can somebody clarify?
Sure.
How many years we've been paying?
Thanks for the question. Um, this is based on a twenty-year loan. Um, I'll just provide a little bit more information, um, to what Mr. Wilber shared. So it's a twenty-year loan. It's a three point seven five percent interest. Um, level payment rounded is one point four four million annually. Again, the tax impact on an average single-family home, which is based on about four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, is just shy of two hundred and fifty dollars a year. It's two hundred and forty-two sixty-eight annually. Um, and just quick math, if that was, uh, spread out over four quarters, that's sixty dollars and sixty-seven cents a quarter.
So two hundred and fifty bucks per year for twenty years?
That's correct, and if you look at, um, the loan going out twenty-five, say, or thirty years, the interest rates increase, and so the twenty-year is actually the least amount that we would have to pay back if we go with that note.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly, thank you. Any further questions?
Yeah, I don't think the math works out. Uh, there's about five thousand households in Millbury, correct?
Jane, do you know? How many households? Six thousand.
Hmm. Okay, thanks. Mr. Kelly, thank you. Sir.
Francis King, ninety-two South Oxley Road. Uh, you were saying that there is some money there, uh, if anything is found, but I didn't hear anything about if mold is, uh, first of all, is there anything that, that covers that? And secondly, uh, Madam Manager, is there anything coming off the tax base?
Mr. King, thank you for your question. Mr. Wilber, do you want to address the mold? Mr. Mold thing first, please.
Do you want to do the mold first? So, uh, when we're replacing the roof, it's not just taking over, uh, replacing that membrane. There's an entire system that goes down. And so when we showed those, uh, slides earlier that had, uh, the, the moisture damage below, uh, the, the membrane, all that insulation and other, uh, material i- is coming out. So that we're not going to leave any, uh, uh, damaged condition, uh, underneath. Uh, and the second piece is that, uh, the, uh, cost estimate that, uh, w- we did, we had two firms, uh, come in and come up with the estimate on, uh, what it would cost in order to, uh, do this work. And in addition to the unit prices we're carrying for some, uh, repair work, there is also, uh, a contingency amount in case you run into any conditions that need, uh, to be addressed. So we're covering, um, uh, in a, uh, responsible and pragmatic, pragmatic way, um, any, uh, unforeseen costs that come up during, uh, the construction process.
Before we get to the, oh, Mr. Wilber, please.
I'll give her another second while she's looking things up. Uh, another piece of information, just so everybody has, if this doesn't pass this year, and we have to push it off another year, the escalation costs are going to be between four and seven percent. So every year that we delay this, it's going to be more and more, just for more information in the back of your head.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Nicole Cooper, twenty-nine Oak Pond Ave. Um, I just wanted to ask a question if the town had spoken with anyone at National Grid about available incentives for energy-efficient HVAC systems on municipal buildings?
Thank you. Thank you for the question.
John Brenton from IMEG. I'm the mechanical engineer. Uh, we will be seeking rebates on the solar system. On the mechanical system, we had initially investigated a slightly more expensive system that was a heat pump that had more rebates available. We elected not to do that to keep the first cost down. There are some prescriptive rebates that are available, but we don't have the type of system because we're essentially doing a one-to-one replacement where we can go in with a custom rebate. Um, so we'll get prescriptive rebates, smaller numbers on mechanical equipment, and larger numbers on the solar.
Thank you. Any more comments or questions? Please.
Thank you for giving me a second. Um, so the last payment, um, for FY twenty-six, um, that's coming off is the Ram's Horn Dam project.
Thank you very much. Well, then we'll vote. All in favor? This is two-thirds, all in favor. All opposed? That's two-thirds. That passes. Which brings us to Article eleven. And we'll hear from the chair of our planning board. Mrs. DeValle.
Good evening. Uh, Bruce DeValle, fourteen Forest Drive, chairman of the planning board. The planning board voted to favorably recommend at our October sixth meeting, and I moved at the town vote to approve Article eleven as set forth in the town meeting warrant.
Just for a second. Got a second? Anyone like to be heard on this? Well, then we'll vote. All in favor? I'm sorry. Come on up. Tell us who you might be. And what you have to say.
After I almost destroyed that fellow. I'd like to make a motion. Terry Burke Dotson, twenty Salo Terrace, Millbury, Massachusetts, oh, one, five, two, seven. Okay, I'd like to make a, a motion to amend section forty-six point two, the accessory dwelling units. And I move to amend the town warrant article for section forty-six point two, accessory dwelling units with the following amendments. Eliminate-
We're going to need that in writing up here, so if you have a copy, that'd be wonderful.
I will.
Thank you.
Okay. Eliminate the amendments included in the warrant article specifically to the following sections. Sections forty, fourteen, fourteen point one, and fourteen point eleven, number five. Sections twenty-two, twenty-two point two, twenty-two point twenty-one, number one, twenty-two point twenty-two, number six, and twenty-two point twenty-three, number seven. Sections twenty-three, twenty-three point two, and tw- twenty-three point two, number nine. Section twenty-four, twenty-four point one, twenty-four point eleven, number two, and twenty-four point two, number three. And amend section forty-six point two, two point four, administration and enforcement as follows. Replace the original text, which reads, "The building inspector shall administer and enforce the provisions of the section forty-six point two." Replace that with, "The planning board shall administer and enforce the, the provisions of section forty-six point two related to ADU regulations." Replace the original text. No building shall be changed in use or configuration without a building permit from the building inspector. And that should be revised to, "No building shall be changed in use or configuration to create or alter an accessory dwelling unit without the special permit approval from the planning board." Then the, the replacement of this other original text, the original text reads, "No building shall be occupied until a certificate of occupancy is issued by the planning, by the building inspector where required." And that should be revised to, "No building shall be occupied until a certificate of occupancy is issued by the building inspector where required." And the last revision, uh, should be that, the last replacement should be, "The building inspector shall follow applicable requirements of state law when administering this section forty-six point two." And the revision should be, "The planning board shall follow all applicable requirements of state law, including Mass General Law, C, C, excuse me, forty A, number one A, and relevant regulations when administering this se- section forty-six point two." Now, the rationale behind all of this-
If, if, if I could just interrupt just for a second? Because I missed most of what you said in terms of what you're striking from this.
I have it for you. It's written down.
If, just for the people about to be voting on it, if you want to go over that again in terms of-
Sure. Do you want to what-
Specify exactly what you're striking out of this article?
Okay. We're going to strike, the first one would be, "The building inspector shall administer and enforce the provisions of this section forty-six."
Oh, forty-six, yeah, we've got, you've got replacing the building inspector with the planning board on forty-six point two point four, yes. But my question is, it's the first part of what you said. You struck a number of, of parts of the other parts, section fourteen.
Okay, the amendments, um, uh, included in the war- warrant article , uh, apply to the following sections. Section fourteen, fourteen point one, and fourteen point eleven. And that squiggly line, I don't know what that means. Um, five, number five. The next one would be section twenty-two, twenty-two point two, twenty-two point twenty-one. That squiggly line, number one. Uh, one, let's see, uh, twenty-two point twenty-two, the squiggly line, number six, and twenty-two point twenty-three, that's squiggly line, number seven. The next section would be twenty-three. Twenty-three point two, and twenty-three point two with that squiggly line, number nine.
In moving to, your amendment would strike all those provisions?
It would amend them. It would eliminate, eliminate the amendments included in the warrant article specifically to the following sections. Okay, and the last one would be section twenty-four, twenty-four point one, twenty-four point eleven with that squiggly line, number two, and twenty-four point two, number three. That squiggly line.
Okay. Thank you. Is that, and that's your motion? Your motion to amend?
No, I'm not, can I finish?
Sure.
Okay. I'm on a roll here.
That's fine. I'm just, you're making a motion to amend. I'm just making sure we've got the motion to amend it down and clear before we start talking about why we should do this.
All right, okay. And the rationale is that the planning board-
That's the why part.
I'm sorry?
Was, that's the why part. Before we get there, we need a second. You made a motion to amend. Is there a second? We have a second. All right, you'd like to be heard in this regard. What do you have to say for yourself?
Okay. The planning board, which is com- um, composed of five members who live in Millbury and were voted in by the townspeople, its citizens, to uphold the bylaws and protect the town. And they are the ones that should be responsi- have this responsible authority to make determinations within the boards of the local zoning bylaw and the state statute. This promotes greater openness, transparency, and community accountability in the approval and enforcement of accessory dwelling units rather than vesting all that authority in one single individual. And, uh, this motion was crafted to be formally appropriate, uh, for the town meeting floor in Massachusetts, clearly identifying the changes in the rationale for the amount, uh, amendment. And I therefore respectfully move to have these amended, amendments adopted.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Would anyone else like to be heard on the motion to amend? Sir.
Hi, my name is Brian Sora, sixteen Jackie Drive. I would just like to make the point that the entire reason for this bylaw change is that there was a change in the state law as related to ADUs. So considerable time and effort was put into making sure this would be applicable to what the new state laws include. And, and the second part that I would just add to this is that this motion would amend essentially the oversight for, to go from the building inspector to the planning board. And I would just like to point out that the planning board themselves recommended Article eleven as written. So I'd please recommend that you say no to this, uh, motion to amend and vote yes to the original motion. Thank you.
This is Sora, thank you. Ms. Dawson, we do need a copy of that up here at your first convenience, but-
May I respond to that, please?
Sure.
Um, the planning board does not want to be bothered with this, and as soon as this- now, this does not, this, accessory dwelling units are still granted by right. But by having the whole planning board look at this, there may be water issues there. There may be, um, the abudders would have to be notified so that they know that this is coming into their area. And maybe instead of putting an accessory, it can't, it can't be stopped in truth. It's by right. But instead of being on the left-hand side of the house, which looks right into their bathroom and bedroom, it could be put on the right-hand side of their house, which looks into the woods. I mean, these are the things that can potentially be negotiated during, uh, the planning board hearing. And plus, the planning board is better aware of water issues that may be, may be present. Whereas, you know, a, a building ins- a good building inspector could be hired from out of state to come here, and he'd be great, and he knows all the dimensions and stuff, but he doesn't know the town, and he doesn't know the people. And I do believe that the abudders especially should have at least an awareness, but they should also put their two cents into how they would like to see this accessory dwelling unit go in. It, it's not going to be stopped. They don't have the ability to stop it, but they can make it more compatible with the compu- with the community.
Ms. Dawson, thank you. Sir.
Thanks. Gregory Williams, sixty-three Elmwood Street. Uh, couple of questions. Uh, is town council up there? Okay. Um, is this a item where there is a clock ticking where the state is requiring us to pass a certain, uh, sort of amendment to our laws before a certain date? Or is this, for lack of a better term, a non-urgent item?
Brian Falk from Myrick Town Council. Um, so the state law was amended to allow ADUs by right. So any provisions of our zoning bylaw, um, that, um, would require a special permit or prohibit ADUs by right is currently unenforceable. Um, so the, the amendments that are proposed under Article eleven would essentially get rid of the contradictions in the zoning bylaw right now that we can enforce and have our zoning bylaw be fully enforceable under state law. Um, it, it doesn't really change anything. It just gets away from looking at the zoning bylaw and saying, "Do I need a special permit for this?" The answer's no, but the bylaw currently says that you do.
Thank you. Uh, I think with, sorry, Ms. Dawson. Uh, my, I guess my next comment would be that it doesn't seem that, uh, not taking action on either this warrant article or the proposed amendment right now would be detrimental. Um, with all due respect, I don't know what we're, what actually got amended throughout the whole thing. It's a long, uh, change to our bylaws. Um, I guess, uh, i- if we're going to make extensive changes or even vote on extensive changes, I would want to see those, uh, in writing for more than five minutes. Uh, I would move that we, uh, vote on the request to amend, uh, no, and then we vote to pass over this item on the, uh, warrant. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Dawson, we'll give you the last word on the motion to amend.
Okay, thank you. Um, I've been in touch with the Attorney General's office and made them aware that, um, our bylaws and our zoning ru- rules- and our zoning rules and regulations state that it's the planning board that grants accessory dwelling units. And as soon as the state said, "Oh, no, you can also have building inspectors do it." They said, "Don't want to do it anymore," and they turned it right over. So I said, "Everything they've done," I says, "You can't, you can't change the law in Milbury until it goes before the, before the town meeting." And I said, "What they've done is illegal. Every single accessory dwelling unit that that building inspector approved truly is illegal." And so they listened to me. "Well, could you hire a lawyer?" I'm not going to hire a lawyer. I know what the law is. The law says the planning board does accessory dwellings, and it's, they, it did not go before the town meeting. And the, and the building inspector, who may or may not even know Milbury or come from Milbury, is granting rubber stamping, anything that comes on his desk. And that's not right. I mean, that's just not right. It's the job of the planning board. The planning board crying, "Oh, we don't want to do that. We'll get in fights with the people that live in the area." So what? That's your job.
Okay, Ms. Dotson, that's enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for talking with us tonight. We're now going to vote on the motion to amend. All in favor of the motion to amend? Signify by raising your placard. All opposed? The motion to amend fails. Anyone else that's like to be heard in any regard relative to the motion, the original Then we'll vote. All in favor of the motion as recently brought? All opposed? That passes. Brings us to Article 12. We'll hear again from Mr. DeVal.
Bruce DeVal, 14 Forest Drive, Chairman of the Planning Board. The Planning Board voted to favorably recommend at our October 6 meeting, and I moved at the town vote to approve Article 12 as set forth in the town meeting warrant.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Anyone like to be heard on this? Sir, please.
Connor McCormick, the Planning Director. For about 12 more hours. I just wanted to give a couple, a little bit of background on this. The inclusionary zoning bylaw that's in front of you, generally speaking, it's a requirement that a percentage of units in new multifamily developments be affordable. This was a bylaw that was developed by the Planning Board with the assistance of the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission, and developed on best practices from other towns. This is a common strategy to increase supply of affordable housing. It was also a recommendation in the town's recent housing production plan. And it is working to address the state law that requires 10% of all housing units in every town in Massachusetts be affordable. Currently, Milbury's percentage is hovering around 3.7. The, the law would apply to multifamily developments of five units or greater. And there's kind of two categories in the proposal. One for developments of 15 units or greater, where the affordable units would have to be constructed on-site at certain percentages to either include 10 or 15% of the units being affordable for people making certain income thresholds. And then for smaller developments, between five and 14 units, either those percentages of on-site affordable units would apply, or they could do a payment in lieu into the Milbury's Affordable Housing Trust Fund. All of these units that would be created would be added to the town subsidized housing inventory. That's a collection of units that go towards the town's 10% mandate from the state. All the units would be required to be affordable in perpetuity. And there would be a, the bylaw provides for a local preference, so first seeking people to live there from, who live in town. Also wanted to note that currently the town has a very limited ability to create affordable housing units in town. We do have an adaptive reuse overlay district and an open space community bylaw, but they have been very seldom utilized over the years and decades. And so there, there has been a very small amount of affordable housing units locally created. They can also, affordable housing units can also be created via the 40B, the Chapter 40B process. But this would be a new way to require affordable units be included in future multifamily development projects. And I guess I'll leave it there. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Mrs. McCormick, thank you, and good luck in Belmont. Anyone else like to be heard on this? Sir, please.
My name's Bob Simler, 8 Grove Street. I'm all for encouraging developers to build new affordable housing in Milbury. I have no problem with that. My issue is with 59.3, which states, "Incentives at the discretion of the planning board, further reduction of minimum parking requirements or dimensional relief may be granted on a case-by-case basis." This section of the proposed bylaw, 53.9, is very open-ended regarding the reduction of parking. If this passes, the planning board will have the power to reduce parking from a new apartment building being built from a minimum parking requirements down to zero parking requirements. This reduction of required parking could be zero for the entire project, not just for the affordable housing units. Where are they going to park? On public ways and municipal parking lots? Anywhere there's an open spot. We're going to be plowing those spots also, so there's another issue. In the center of town, we need to protect the very limited open parking we have right Last week, several businesses I spoke with stated that the last reduction in parking caused by the bumpouts hurt their business greatly. One business told me they're even thinking of closing because of lack of customers and how hard it is for them to park near his store. Now, this is a new bylaw, and now this new bylaw, Section 53.9, wants to give these limited open parking spaces up so a developer can build a block of apartments with the possibility of no on-site parking. I say no to 53.9. We should protect what little parking spaces we have for our local businesses. We should be supporting these local businesses first, not the developers. I urge to vote no on Article 12 until 53.9. Reduced parking is better defined. Also, 53.9 states that at the discretion of the planning board on a case-by-case basis. Shouldn't what is good for one developer be good for all developers? Why is it a case-by-case? I vote no on 53 until 53.9 is better defined.
Mrs. Simler, thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Sora.
Hi, my name is Brian Sora, 16 Jackie Drive. I just wanted to comment on the article that is in front of us. And first off, thank the Planning Board for the amount of time that the Planning Board and the town planners put into this. I was the Chair of the Housing Production Plan Steering Committee, and we had met over the course of a good year or so. And of, of those meetings, this was one of our top priorities for this town. I know that a lot of people that are in here probably were also here during the MBTA law that was passed here and that we deliberated on in a good amount of length in meetings past. And the spirit of this all is to help create housing and affordable housing. The problem with certain laws, like say MBTA, is we have a subsidized housing inventory benchmark that we need to hit of 10%. And until we do so, we are, we are essentially exposed to pretty much any 40B that's, that's proposed in town. And that could pop up anywhere. As somebody who lives in a very quaint little part of town, there's a 40B that's now four stories and 192 units, that's going to be directly abutting my property. So I know firsthand. The only way in order for this town to get beyond our 10% threshold is to find some sort of way that we can incentivize our builders to build really beyond 10% for affordable housing with every project they develop. And that's very hard for us to do as a town. And, you know, a builder's going to tell you, "Well, there's just, you know, it's, the numbers don't line up, it's to really allow for too much affordable housing." They're not going to do it on their own. What this would do, this would allow for some incentivization for builders to come in and at least increase what the affordable units they're going to have in their proposed projects to be north of 10%, 15%, which will at least help us to take some swings at trying to increase our SHI to get to 10%, which then would allow us some sort of safe harbor for these 40B projects that a lot of you have probably heard about. What I, some of the things that I really like about this is that these affordable units that are required are to be constructed on-site. I know my colleague, Ms. Dotson, we've had plenty of conversations where some of these developers will find loopholes with which they can put these affordable units off-site, on separate buildings, cram them all into other two or three family buildings down the street from these proposed projects. So I like that that is holding them accountable and making the affordable units be constructed on-site. And the 15%, those things like this are going to hopefully help us get to our goals of affordable housing. It's not going to happen overnight, and it's probably not going to be perfect. The main thing, and I hear Mr. Simler's concerns on things like parking, I think certainly downtown, that's been a constant conversation, and it's not unwarranted, you know? The municipal lot has helped crack away at that, but essentially, there's going to be some sort of concessions that need to be made in coming to the table with these developers to come up with some sort of a compromise, or we're just going to keep falling victim to 40Bs. So myself, speaking for myself personally, not for any board or committee, I would recommend this as, voting yes for this. Thank you.
Mrs. Sora, thank you. All right. Seeing no other people at the microphone, I say we vote. All in favor of the motion? We require two-thirds for this to pass. All in favor? Please signify by raising your placard. All opposed? That's not two-thirds. That does not pass. The Chair would entertain a motion to dissolve this meeting. Is there a second? All in favor? All opposed? We'll see you in the spring. We're dissolved. Thank you for being here.